I thought I'd give him two minutes. This meeting of the Huntsville City Council is called to order. It is June 8th, 2017, 6:00. We welcome all of you here this evening. We will begin our evening with an invocation given by Rabbi Elizabeth Bahar, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mark Russell. Please stand for the invocation.
Sovereign of the universe, mercifully receive our prayer for our land and its government. Let your blessing pour out on this land and on all officials of this country, city, and county who are occupied in good faith with the public needs. Instruct them from your laws, enable them to understand your principles of justice so that peace and tranquility, happiness and freedom might never turn away from our land. Please, wise one, God of life, breath of all flesh, awaken your spirit within all inhabitants of our land and plant among the people of different nationalities and faith and all who dwell here, love and brotherhood, peace and friendship and sisterhood. Uproot from their heart all hatred and enmity, all jealousy and vying for supremacy. Fulfill the yearning of all the people of our great city to speak proudly in its honor. Fulfill their desire to see it become a light to all others. Therefore, may it be your will that this city should be a blessing to all of its inhabitants. Cause your beautiful light to dwell among all of the people here and create an environment of friendship and freedom and soon fulfill the vision of your prophet, let nation not lift up sword against nation, nor let them learn ways of war anymore, as together we say, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Rabbi Bahar. Thank you Councilman Russell. We will move on to the approval of the minutes. You have received the meetings of the regular meeting held on May 25th, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to be made to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Resolutions and special recognitions. We have a very special recognition tonight. The mayor has a presentation of the life-saving medal. Mayor Battle.
If I could ask Chief McMurray and his command staff to come forward. We have a life-saving presentation tonight and I'd love for Chief to tell us about it. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman, for the opportunity to share a great event that occurred here recently. In fact, on April 13th, 2017, Officer Micah Alexander. Would you come forward, please? Let me tell you what this young man did while on shift. He was dispatched to a suspicious vehicle that had been parked near a baseball field for several hours. Upon arrival, he immediately noticed that the driver appeared to have a black trash bag, several of them tied around his neck and his head, in an attempt to commit suicide. As he called for medics to respond, he realized he needed to take action as well. He was able to extricate the person from the vehicle by force. He had to break his way into the car, get the suspect out. He undid and found out the subject is not breathing. So he was able to administer life-saving measures and to get him breathing back until 911 got there with the paramedics. We were able to take the person to the hospital and, of course, save his life. So it's a great honor, Micah, to present you with one of the highest, and if you were this individual, you would say the highest award you could possibly get, and that is the life-saving medal of a citizen of the great city of Huntsville. So thank you very much. We're very proud of you.
(applause).
Of course, with me is Deputy Chief Giles and Captain Jeff Rice from the North Precinct. He is one of our North Precinct officers on second shift. So if you see him out there, be sure and wave at him. He's one of the good guys.
Micah, thank you for an outstanding job. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We have a couple of resolutions for adoption only. 4B-2, one is the presentation of a resolution honoring the life of Dr. Eddie Green. Mr. Kling, would you like to make that motion?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Is there anything, all in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Anything you would like to share with regard to this, Mr. Kling?
If I could, is Dr. Eddie Sherrod here tonight? There he is. Okay. I'd like this. I'd like to present this to Mr. Sherrod. Mr. Green was a friend that I was proud to have known. He was a mentor on many events and issues over the years. He lived within the district that I represented and he was pretty good as far as giving me a citywide perspective to make sure that I was carefully looking at issues that have impacted all the facets of the community. Mr. Dr. Green had recently passed. He had served as an associate professor of political science at Alabama A&amp;M University. He had been involved in numerous leadership and political activities here in the Huntsville-Madison County area, including serving as the county coordinator for the Madison County chapter of the Alabama Democratic Conference. And he had also served as vice president of the Madison County Democratic Executive Committee. He was a man who took, if he had felt strongly about an issue, he would take a stand. He had been successful in his filing of a complaint with the Justice Department for improper district lines that were drawn in Madison County. He provided the research and updated the redistricting plan that helped to address the issue. At this time, I'd like to make this presentation to Dr. Sherrod.[444.00][444.00](applause). Eddie, I know you were about his, Dr. Green's closest friend around, and it's my privilege to present that to you and ask that the extra copies that we have would be given to members of his family. Dr. Green, again, was a friend. He was a mentor, and I think he helped give me a good perspective on the issues in the city and hopefully made me a little bit of a better elected official. Thank you. Give your chips.
Okay, thank you. We funeralized Dr. Green last Saturday, and as Councilman Kling has said, he was quite a man. He was a man for justice for all, and he worked very diligently to make sure progress was made in all areas of life. So on behalf of his family, I'd like to thank you and the council for presenting this resolution to Dr. Green and his family. Thank you very much.[511.44][511.44](applause).
Thank you, Councilman Kling. 4B-2 is a resolution congratulating Julian A. Evans III on his promotion to Chief Warrant Officer Five with a celebration to be held June 9th, 2017. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 4B-3 is a resolution honoring William H. Gaston. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Motion carries. 4B, we have no special recognitions. We do have a number, a couple of announcements. Council members, items 14A and 14B. The administration has asked for consideration by unanimous consent, so please be aware of that when we come to that point in the agenda, and we will consider 14A and 14B. Also, we would excuse Mr. Culver tonight, who is traveling. We have no business with outside legal representation. We have no public hearings to be held, but we do have a number of public hearings to be set. 6B-1 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 26.60 acres of newly annexed property lying on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of Hazlen Road to Residence 2 District. This was set at the July, this is set for the July 27th, 2017 Regular Council.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
The motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Any discussions or question on this? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is set. 6B-2 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 79.86 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive and east of Diddle Landing Parkway to Residence 2 District. This was to be set for the July 27th, 2017 Regular Council Meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
The motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is set. 6B-3 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning .99 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Kennedy Lane and east of Old Big Cove Road to Residence 1B District to be set for the July 27th, 2017 Regular Council Meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is set. 6B-4 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 14.22 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Buford Drive and west of Old Big Cove Road to Residence 1B District to be set for the July 27th, 2017 Regular Council Meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is set. We are now at communications from the public. We have a number of people who have set up. I would remind you that when your name is called, would you please come to either of the podiums? State your name and your address. You will have three minutes in which you may address the public regarding your particular item. We will begin, and we are honored actually tonight, to have former Councilman Glenn Watson, who has signed up to speak regarding golf, bike, and walk. Mr. Watson, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the City Council. I am honored to be here tonight to speak to you guys. You're doing a great job. I want you to compliment you on that. I come to speak on behalf of the golf course. I've been called by several people, too many to meet, that would like you to consider holding a decision off for a period of time necessary to be sure that the golf course people, the people that want the golf course, are heard. If we had all of the golfers come to this meeting, there wouldn't be any room. The bikers need their representation also. I like riding on my bike. The walking, I don't do as much as I want to, but I like walking. There's no reason why that golf course could not continue as a municipal golf course with a walking and a bike path included. Now, we're the only city in the state of Alabama that might lose our municipal golf course. Every other city, other major city, Mobile, Montgomery, Birmingham, have a municipal course. We really need to keep ours. I speak, and if I go over three minutes, Jackie Reed said I could.[806.01][806.01](laughter). But I do really wish that you would consider that and not rush into a decision. I know L is coming up on this, on this meeting tonight, and I kind of hope that we could delay it long enough to, because all of you know that we could fill this place with golfers. That would not accomplish anything, except I want you to know that a lot of people would use the golf course should it be revamped. And I know it's going to cost a little money, but we spend money on other things. Second thing, the bike trail, I'm very much in favor of that. I love riding a bike, and they could make that a path included into the rejuvenation of the municipal golf course and a walking path that goes along with a bike path. They are in many places in the city where we have walking paths and bike paths in the same. You just get out of the way. Those bikes come moving through pretty quick.[863.13][863.13](laughter). But there, I love, I love to see that, and I love to see the use of our city property for all the people. Let's not leave out the golfers. With that, I say thanks a lot. For the second time, I've been here since, since I left, and I, I want you to know that I, I hope we're talking to the next governor here pretty quick here.[883.57][883.57](laughter).
Thank you, Mr.
Might as well throw that in for a little.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, for being with us tonight. Just to clarify, item L on the agenda tonight is, is a John Hunt Park item, but it regards a pavilion that's going to be built in the festival area. The golf course options are not on the agenda tonight. They will be on the June 22nd agenda. There is some timeliness associated with that discussion because of the grow period. If, if we do go with option one, we need to have time to get the grass in, or we're going to lose an entire year of having the golf course open. So it's, it's a timely issue, and it will be considered on the June 22nd agenda. Thank you again, Mr. Watson. The next person to sign up is Ralph Timberlake. Mr. Timberlake, to discuss Huntsville Hospital, the city's open record policy. Mr. Timberlake? Is Mr. Timberlake here? He's not here. If he, if he comes back in, we'll have, we'll call on him. We will move on to Chad Edwards, who is here to speak regarding the Huntsville Bike Park. Mr. Edwards, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Chad Edwards, 102 Cottonport Place, Madison, Alabama. Thanks, council. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for allowing us this time to speak. You've probably heard about us already. I'm part of NICA. I'm a head coach for one of our local NICA teams here in Madison, the Madison Trailblazers. And I just wanted to take a minute and reemphasize some of the interest and the tremendous growth in our program in the area. We've had a huge amount of interest in the bike options here in Huntsville from as far away as Anniston, Birmingham, and in the Florence area. And as myself, not a resident of Huntsville, but I've been in Madison for 26 years, I do come to Huntsville quite a bit. And so there is quite a large amount of interest in having a multi-use type of facility that would include some biking options as part of that. NICA in general, since its inception in about 2003, and official start in 2009, went from a couple of hundred riders to now over 11,000 kids participating, and that's grade six through 12, boys and girls, riding all in 20 states across the country and growing every year. And then, as part of that, tonight, you know, we've had a lot of our riders and members here in previous meetings. I know we've provided you a lot of details and information on the league and the growth of the league locally, but as we speak tonight, there's over 200 of us up on Montesano Mountain this evening in a time trial series that we have every summer as part of SOABA, the Southern Off-Road Biking Association. Mary Ann's here as part of that as well. But that's a weekly, or a summer series that we have, eight weeks every year, where we pick a portion of the trails and do a time trial series, and there's well over 200, about 250 people participating in that as we speak right now. A lot more would be here this evening. But just thank you for your continued interest and consideration of, in support of a multi-use options there, including golf and many of the others that we've talked about before. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. The next person to sign up is Morgan Andrew Lee, Huntsville Bike Run Park.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for having us this evening and taking this into consideration.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name's Morgan Andrew Lee. My address is 1010 Humes Avenue, 35801.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm, of course, here to speak about the multi-use facility. I'm the membership director for the Spring City Cycling Club. Spring City was founded in 1892 to further, quote, "the development, promotion of cycling for sport, fitness, recreation, and safety education." There was some fanfare with the inception of the club that year in 1892 with races around the Courthouse Square. The club was established in 10 years before the first automobile was registered in Madison County. The same year the club was founded, the League of American Wheelmen started the Good Roads Magazine to further the good roads movement started by cyclists in the 1870s. Spring City was a participant in the movement to pave roads throughout the nation. If you are waiting in traffic on US 72 East, take a moment to thank our early cyclists who campaigned for the first properly paved US highway in Madison County. We've been here all along. Spring City has about 300 members. That membership is shared with and crosscuts the active outdoor exercise community in Huntsville. Team Rocket Triathlon Club, the Alabama Wheelman, SOABA, Huntsville Mountain Bikers, all started as divisions of Spring City Cycling Club. The Rocket City Cycle Bells Women's Cycling Group, who is also here tonight, has joined under the umbrella of Spring City Cycling Club. We share members with the Huntsville Track Club as runners use the roads and trails in town and in the park. Spring City supports the NICA High School mountain bike teams with financial and equipment logistical support. We know that they are the future of the sport and the basis of the next generation of active outdoor exercisers. They will choose where they live and work based on the culture, if the culture and environment encourages that lifestyle. We have organized group rides on the roads, trails, and gravel roads by the river seven days a week. The local reach of the riding community and running community runs into the thousands. Each of these organized groups puts on several events per year, bringing thousands to Huntsville to recreate and compete on the roads and trails. The statewide NICA races this spring at the Space and Rocket Center brought in around 380 student athletes and approximately 1,500 family, friends, coaches to occupy the Space and Rocket Center for two whole days. In September, the Spring City is planning to start its annual century ride in town at the Bob Harrison Center on the north end. It regularly attracts about 500 riders. These events are revenue drivers for the city. The local spending for overnight visitors to cycling events is $200, $350 per day per person. I'm sure you will hear similar numbers from our tourism board and Huntsville Sports Commission. To have an in-town facility to allow riders, mountain bikers, children, and families to ride, and our NICA race teams to practice safely would certainly be an attraction to the city for events and visitors who like to travel with their bikes.
Mr. Andrew Lee, your three minutes is up. Thank you so much.
Okay. We fully support the establishment of this park as a multi-use facility to further the promotion and development of bicycling for sport, fitness, recreation, transportation, and safety education. We've been working on this since 1892, and that's 125 in human years. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your information tonight. We appreciate you being with us. The next person to sign up is John Paul Hampton. Subject is Gibson's Loss of Business.
John Paul Hampton, 8150 Holdfield Road.
Welcome.
As most of you know, I know most of you as customers of Gibson's. We normally, in the past few years, have between one and five groups that either come by Gibson's on the way to the golf course or after the golf course, and they spend their money in Huntsville and sales tax. My group, this week, we went to, out in Madison, spent about $250 on eating and so forth, golf. Wednesday, we went to Cortland, spent another $250 on golf and eating. Today, we went to Madison to Marinville, spent another $250 on golf and eating. Sales tax for stated for the city of Huntsville was zero this week on our group. You've got a lot of golfers in Huntsville, and they're going out of town spending their money. And that's all I had to say about that. Do ask the city, next time they're thinking about building a double-deck parking garage at Gibson's, would like to be on the list for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday parking. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to sign up, Jim Lane. Subject is the golf course. Mr. Lane, no, Mr. Lane chose us not to speak. The next person to speak is Eddie Sherrod. Mr. Sherrod? Subject is the golf course.
Good evening. I'm Eddie Sherrod. I live at 5724 Jones Valley Drive Southeast. And I'm here also to speak on behalf of the golfers, and I concur with what you gentlemen have already said. In addition to that, Huntsville, as I go out, go through the various cities, I say, you know, they say, "Where you live?" I say, "I live in Huntsville." They say, "What's that?" I say, "Well, you know, you got Huntsville, then you got Alabama. We're the most progressive city in Alabama." And I cannot imagine a city of this size and a city of this importance, think, even think of not having a public golf course. As a gentleman says, you make money off golf because you building all these hotels and motels, when people come from out of town, many people like myself, when I go out of town, I'm looking for a golf course. I don't look to travel 20 or 30 miles to play golf. I would prefer playing in the inner city. We have high schools who are formulating golf teams. And not only that, they need somewhere to play, and we could provide that for the kids. Huntsville, like I said, space, one of the space capitals. I can't imagine us not having a golf course. You can do all the things that you want to do in addition to golf, I believe, on the same, on that same premise. I think as smart as people are around here, they can draw all the, they are walking paths, a bike path, in addition to having a golf course. So I think we, I think we're missing the boat here because golf is a lifetime sport. We senior citizens can play golf, and not that you can't walk the rest of your life, but we prefer playing golf, most people. So, and by that, we have a riding cart, so we can ride and play golf. And I'm not opposed to the other things that you have in mind, but I think that with all the new jobs coming to town, I saw somewhere recently, I think we got, what, 10,000 people probably coming here from the FBI? All of them not rich. All of them would not belong to golf, I mean, country clubs. I can't afford a country club, but I can afford to go to Monispa Park. I can almost walk there. So I think that we should really think this out before we take away these privileges from people like myself and these gentlemen and other golfers in Huntsville. I think if we do that, we're really, you're taking away a moneymaker, and you bring, I guess you're charged for the walk. If not, you're taking away all your money. But if you're going to charge to utilize the park and take away another utilization of the park, you're not going in place. That's even steven, you know? So I think we need to get someone to run the golf course that has an expertise in it, that can make a profit because enough golfers here to make it, promote the golf course, and then let's continue to have Monispa Golf Course. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Sherrod. The next person to sign up is Loretta Detlefson. Subject is the golf course.
Thank you, Loretta Detlefson, 410 London Drive, 35801. The presentation given at last week's work session listed repairs and improvements necessary to keep the golf course open and also to convert the course into bike trails. The costs for both operations are comparable. The golfers don't enjoy being in competition with the bikers over the golf course that they have had for years, and the golf course, the bikers want to take over. The golf course sits in the perfect location as a complete sports attraction. If you turn it into bike trails, training facilities, driving range, walking trails, running trails, dog park, frisbee, golf, you will create a piecemeal disaster. The golf course will at least generate some revenue for the city because every time a person plays golf, they pay a greens fee, usually rent a cart, buy a drink and snacks. The bikers will not be charged a fee to ride the trails. No fees for anything there except for the new driving range that is to be built. This will still hold golfers responsible for generating revenue for the biking trails or to paying events for the bikers. The events will not support the golf park, the biking park. The tennis courts, ice plex, natatorium, botanical gardens, and the municipal course all charge a fee for daily use of their facilities. They each receive some subsidies from the city. It seems the only one of the few facilities listed that the city expects to be self-supporting and profitable is the golf course. There are biking, walking, and running trails all over the city. Go to their websites. A biking facility can be built elsewhere that can satisfy the needs of the multi-users. The municipal golfers only have one option. Golf is not a sport for old senior people, as is perceived by some folks. My son was a junior golfer, grew up to adulthood playing at municipal. His son, starting at the age of three, played with his dad and granddad at municipal. Lots of happy stories for young, old, fortunate, and unfortunate. The course has provided an affordable and pleasurable experience to many thousands of golfers. The municipal golf course goes way back in time, almost 60 years, and carries lots of history with it. Time does march on, and the lady now needs some sprucing up. The city says they have the money to do that. I see no reason why she shouldn't be repaired and preserved as she was always meant to be. The Huntsville Becky Pierce. The Huntsville Becky Pierce Municipal Golf Course. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Detlefson. Ms. Reed, Jackie Reed. Subject is government issues.
Good evening. I just want to thank you all for laying public input. Seems like we've got the reason for y'all being up there. And I also want to thank God for giving me the courage to come down here and try to help government to see what the people want in this city. I couldn't do it without him. He's my strength and courage and faith and determination. So if you want to fuss with anybody about me, take it on with him. Appreciate you. And it's good to see Lynn Watson sitting down here instead of up there because he remembers me many, many times sitting down when he was down here. Anyway, the golf course seems to be number one subject tonight. I have to say that I go along, you do not take the quality of life from the seniors that's paid their time and been in this city and need a place to play golf. We give property to condo people, apartments, we give it to them. We build parking garages for developers. We waste and give. Holiday Inn over here, we paid six point eight million dollars for that property. I got the figures on the top of my head, trust me, and a library at my house if y'all need the paperwork. But I'm saying, we are giving nine-year leases, we're giving this city away. Take some money out of the budget, go to the golf course. And you did give a contract for Big Spring Park, but I seen city employees over there doing most of the work. And I saw him walking around, and he said he's the man doing the contract, but the city employees were doing the work. So if you need city employees to help you bring the golf course up, we want it big, beautiful, and put a lot of money in it, and it needs to be kept for the seniors. I'm sorry, I'm gonna stand on it till the day I die, so if y'all take it away, you're still gonna hear about it. Anyway, I just think you don't need to be doing that. Also, John Hunt Park's on here tonight, and see what we're gonna do about that. And during to our presentation last week, Joe Davis Stadium was never mentioned. We should have been having concerts down there, open concerts, for many, many years, just sitting there idle. I don't know what we're gonna do with that, there's not too much talk about that either. But there's plenty of room in John Hunt Park for the bikers, for the walkers. You need to, you've paid twelve thousand five hundred dollars for somebody to do a study for a presentation, you could have spent that money on the golf course. You put now too many contracts, you're just like Ward Iskey with the school system. Stop it. There's intelligent people in this city that can help you all do some planning, set up committees, one for women, one for the young professionals, and one for the seniors. And I bet we could make Huntsville a beautiful, great city. Think outside the box and try to help the public and keep it going. I'd like for you to hold some issues tonight. F, G, H, L, W, X, Y. It's got a lot of questions on it. You did get those numbers?
Thank you, Ms.
You got priority stuff. I'd like to know what some of that priority is on this agenda here. You don't spell it out enough. I can't hardly read you anymore. When I ask somebody anything, they don't know. So before you vote, tell us what you're voting on. I appreciate you.
We will do that.
Time's up. Thank you. I love you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. As always, we appreciate you being here. Howard Bankhead, subject is golf. Mr. Bankhead?
Good afternoon. Howard Bankhead, twenty-one oh one, K O Delle Avenue.
Welcome.
I'm here on really two things. I'm with the youth golf program and the Tennessee United Jazz Society, and I have a youth golf program. We teach kids life skills through golf. I think if we could compromise maybe have, consider, have a nine-hole golf course, if you do anything, at least a nine-hole golf course, and have it with the bike trails too, might be an option. So that's an option I think we should consider. Also, if you could, we have our thirty-first annual Jazz June Festival in Huntsville. It's the most multicultural event in the area, and it's June the eighteenth on the mountain. So if you guys can just consider coming out and supporting our youth in arts, it's very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bankhead. And finally, I believe Mr. Timberlake has joined us. Mr. Timberlake?
Thank you, Madam President. Ralph Timberlake, twenty-one seventeen, Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-one-zero. Madam President and council members, I rise and beseech you again to honor the open record laws because that is the bedrock of our democracy and our oligarchy. You may ask, well, how is that? They're antithetical to each other. Not so. We elected you via democracy. You rule as an oligarchy. To that end, I'm having a lot of difficulty in two areas with my fellow public servants. One is getting them to, getting the city to have a, a open records policy that requires an answer to the system. I think it's in the First Amendment that the citizen have a right to petition, but the preliminary that, that the government has an obligation to respond to that petition. Otherwise, the founding fathers would never have put it inside of the Constitution if they just wanted us to throw it at you and you forget it. Secondly, I'm concerned about the Huntsville Hospital. Most of us may not be aware that the city of Huntsville owns the Huntsville Hospital. And under the Healthcare Act of Alabama, in the wisdom of the legislatures when they wrote this, they exempted the Huntsville Hospital from the open records and open meeting laws. The board members of the Huntsville Hospital are taking advantage of that. I think it's unfair to the citizens of Huntsville, Alabama, and you august individuals has an opportunity to rectify that. I intend to ask my legislators to go and amend this antithetical document because there's no way that the citizens should be paying for something or own something that they do not have an opportunity or a right to understand what is going on on their behalf. Thank you, and Happy Father's Day to all the males.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. That concludes our public comments. Item eight is Huntsville Utility Items. We have no Huntsville Utility Items, however. Mr. Wes Kelly, the new CEO of Huntsville Utilities, is joining us tonight, and we would like to invite him to come to the microphone. Mr. Kelly, welcome to Huntsville. We wish you the best of luck in your new position. Would you like to take a few minutes to introduce yourselves to everyone?
Yeah, very briefly. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I really appreciate being here. Huntsville Utilities, as you know, is an outstanding organization, and I'm honored to be a part of that team. We have several important projects that are underway right now, and we're gonna continue on with the mission that's been going forward of being that critical infrastructure resource for this community. So we want to be a catalyst of improvement, catalyst for economic development, and make sure that we're serving the citizens with the resources that they need for comfort, convenience, and commerce. So I'm honored to be a part of this organization, honored to be a part of this community, and if any of you have any issues that I need to be aware of, please do not hesitate to contact me anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We look forward to having you join us for future meetings, and also would like to thank Mr. Tony Owens for his service as the interim CEO during these past few months. We have enjoyed working with you as well, and, and, and thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, and I just thank you for the opportunity to, to serve in that capacity over the last few months. It's, it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number nine is board appointments. We have no board appointments to be voted on, however, we do have a number of board appointment nominations. Nine B one is the nomination of Elizabeth Dotz Fleming for appointment to the Historical Preservation Authority for a term to expire June third, twenty, twenty-twenty-two, nominated by Mr. Kling. Nine B two is a nomination of Joyce Ledoux Hampton for reappointment to the Bingo Review Committee, seat three, for a term to expire April eighth, twenty-nineteen, nominated by the chair. Nine B three is nomination of David Mathis for reappointment to the Huntsville Madison County Marine and Port Authority for a term to expire July one, twenty-twenty-two, nominated by the chair. Nine B four is the nomination of William Woody Anderson for reappointment to the Madison County Commission's District Board, place three, for a term to expire April thirty, twenty-twenty-one, nominated by the chair. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, Madam Chair. I nominate Jim Batson for appointment to the Huntsville Natural Gas Utility Board and the Huntsville Water Utility Board for a term to expire July first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Councilman Russell. Are there any other nominations? That concludes our nominations. Item ten is approval of expenditures and the Finance Committee report. Item ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for payment vouchers in the amount of eight million four hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and four cents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution carries. Mr. Kling, is there a report from the Finance Committee?
Well, just to wave a flag to the council members, and of course, Mayor Battle and his folks are aware of it, the Finance Department has issued their comprehensive annual financial report for the two thousand sixteen fiscal year, and I think council members found that in their offices this week.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Item eleven, communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Some things that I think that people might want to look out for this next couple of weeks. Green Street Market is happening now. Music on the square is happening now. If you happen to walk outside, you'll hear music coming from all around the square. And then Friday night, we have an art walk in downtown Huntsville along the square. And, and then Under the Lights on Friday nights is happening outside UG White and Paints and Pixels where there's various genres, genrades of music. And then concert in the parks starts on Monday. Last Monday, I think we were gonna start, but it rained us out, and so we're starting this Monday, six-thirty with Winslow Davis Ensemble and Calypso Vision. So there's a lot of things happening in town, and I hope that everybody goes out and visits and enjoys because all of it is part of what kind of makes the fabric of our community. And also today, somebody gave me a great book. It's a book that I hope that all of y'all will take time to read. It says, "If Mayors Rule the World." So I want to suggest that to everybody. It's a great book for, for all to read. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will move on to communications from the council. We will begin with Councilman Key.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to everybody. One, I just want to directly say again, it is a true honor to be in the presence of the family and supports that, I see the Cook family, who's been a true blessing to me, Mr. Sharad himself, and there's also a direct blood family relative here, Sam Green of, Mr. Eddie Green. He was an outstanding individual, full of fight and fervor, lived a large amount of years of wisdom of which I could grab before he departed this earth. So again, I just want to give my own honor and ode to who he is. Also, to earlier, some people saw me stand up, that young man, that, that guy that we call Micah the hero, at one point was the biggest thorn in my side. He took my first base position early on at Stoner Field, and Micah's family has been with me since I was about four years old. He is a true example of what Huntsville can create. Me and him grew up together in northwest Huntsville. I remember the day that his father bought me my first baseball outfit, and from that point on, his family has sort of been connected to me in a way I could have never imagined. So this moment of seeing us both trying to really turn towards Huntsville, the home that raised us, and trying to help raise it is a, is a unique moment for me. So it was a true blessing. Again, I thank the mayor and everybody, the police staff that showed respect to who Micah is, but he's also a product of Huntsville and the greater Huntsville community. I just want to show a quick story. Yesterday was the fresh market in Terry Heights. And recently in Terry Heights, I'm now living there on my wonderful tour. I usually get these knocks on my doors around eleven o'clock, two AM. They have sort of figured that I can call nine-one-one faster than them, but they usually are about bad things. And we recently had a shooting in the neighborhood, and we've had a number of issues in speeding and renters markets. But yesterday was a unique day because on Wednesdays, for about two and a half hours, people come together around food and good conversation. Ms. Jordan was there, Cam Benyon was there, Scott was there from Community Development. And for about two and a half hours in a community that has a negative social connotation, all you heard were laughs. You saw kids running across the street. You heard dogs barking and people having conversations, good music, getting ready for Bible study. And I think it's very important for places like that in all parts of Huntsville that we be very cautious on making decisions on what parts of town are bad parts of town. Incidents are autonomous, and they're isolated to decisions made by individuals who do not know about conflict resolution. The greater part of that Terry Heights community are great, hard-working people, and they now live in a community that might have a connotation that they themselves never implemented. So I just want you to internalize that. No matter where you live in this city, as you drive through these places and hear about these places on the news, filter them with that thought that maybe there are stupid people doing stupid things. But the majority of places, like a Terry Heights, where for two and a half hours, all salt and pepper, well-seasoned community, comes together to eat peaches and sell squash and talk about good old times for no good reason other than the fact that they're a great community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Key. Councilman Russell?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind the public it's All-Star Baseball Season, and we'll be taking the tour of all the parks. There'll be All-Star Games at Eastern, I know of, in Belmont, and, and maybe one other park, and they'll be over the next three weeks. So it's a good time to get out and see the city, and as Mr. Key said, good out, good time to get out and meet the community and see all the people from the city together enjoying baseball. And Madam President, at least during your time, will you talk about the work session schedule and make sure all the council knows when we're gonna have work sessions and notify the public? Thank you.
Councilman Kling?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. My thoughts this evening are with the families, Public Works Director Chris McNeese and Urban Development Director Shane Davis. Both of those fine department head leaders have, are experiencing the loss of their father. I've been through it myself a couple of years ago, and I know other people at City Hall have had similar losses. And my thoughts are with, with the two of them. They both have been great people as far as doing a wonderful job for this community, and we certainly want to recognize the significance of this event and wish them, you know, Godspeed. A week from Monday, June the nineteenth, I'll be having my monthly town meeting at the library, and everyone, including Ms. Reed, are welcome to attend like this. Actually, I want to, I'm just kidding about Ms. Reed. She and I met at Big Spring Cafe yesterday, and we solved most of the problems in city government, and perhaps we even created a few, but I always do look forward to our good bull sessions that we had with Ms. Reed. And yesterday was very enjoyable, Ms. Reed. I just wanted to put that on the record for you like that. We've had a lot of interesting discussion, very positive, thought-provoking discussions at the last two meetings about the municipal golf course issue. And I hope we're not gonna get to a point where we get one side basically pitted against the other side. And I wonder if it might be helpful, we got council members to kind of collaborate since we can't really do it except at a public meeting, to share ideas, you know, what can we do? Is there a way we can come up with amenities that would provide something for, for both sides? Is there enough space that we could do basically what we call Option Two, those amenities, if they could be located elsewhere at John Hunt Park and still work on preserving the golf course? I'm open for ideas. I've been looking at some, some possibilities. I think we've had some great people. And I gotta say that up until about a month ago, I wasn't really aware that mountain bike riding was that big of a sport, but the enthusiasm, the positive ideas and information I've received, I think is really very impressive. I do respect the concerns of the golf course community. You know, I've said before, we've had a lousy contractor, and perhaps the oversight from the Recreation Department wasn't what we had wanted it to be over that contractor. And we, you know, we're up here, I guess, trying to see if there is creative solutions or ways that we could come up with an idea that would, that would work. And I guess at this point, I'm just kind of looking for ideas and seeing what we could do. Maybe other council members, mayors have ideas that we can take from what we've heard from both sides. But again, and I think Ms. Reed, and I can't believe I'm quoting Ms. Reed for a second time, but, you know, the ideas that we hear from the public really are very impressive. really are very impressive, and we've heard some very thought-provoking ideas on both sides of this issue. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. May I just also say how much I have enjoyed hearing from all the people who, from golfers and bikers and runners and walkers. I heard from some disc golf people. I haven't heard from any dog park people yet, but I'm sure we will. The information that has been shared has been extremely helpful and very impressive, but I think what has impressed me most of all is the passion that all of you bring to the table. It's obvious that you love what you do, that your families have been blessed by these various efforts, and that you have enjoyed them, and we look forward to doing the best for as many people as we possibly can. To that end, again, I would remind you that June 22nd is when those issues will be considered by council. I would remind the council members that Mr. Riley has been instructed to create resolutions, one in favor of Option One, one in favor of Option Two, and we can certainly work with him with regard to that. Also, following up on Mr. Russell's reminder, you know, we work on these agendas beforehand and think we have everything on there, and then there's one thing we forget, and that is to announce that we do have a work session on June 13th. It does not concern the golf course. At 4:30, there will be an open house held here in council chambers with members of the staff, as well as the consultants from UDA, who will present the downtown master plan. So it will be open to the public. The public can ask the staff and the consultants questions and look at the ideas that are being presented. Then at 6 o'clock, the council will meet in a work session to further consider the downtown master plan and other issues related to it. So please, please make a note of that. Also, as had been mentioned by the mayor and by Councilman Keith, we have farmers' markets in South Huntsville as well, and they are, as Councilman Keith said, a wonderful opportunity to connect with the community. On Tuesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 is Latham Farmers Market at the, on Weatherly Road, just before you get to the Parkway. And on Saturdays is the Farmers Market at St. Tom's. Every Saturday morning, there are fresh fruits and vegetables and flowers and cupcakes and crafts and all kinds of cool things. And so would anyone who's in those areas at that time, I think I figured it out, and almost every day of the week, if you time it right, you can go to a farmer's market. And that's really exciting, that the community offers not only fresh, local produce, but an opportunity to connect. And we would suggest that y'all check one out if you haven't gone. Found some great sunflowers last Saturday at the St. Tom's Market. This next week, the South Huntsville Business Association will meet together in a regular meeting, but not in a regular place. They will be meeting at the entrance to the New Grissom High School, where South Huntsville Business Association members and friends can take a tour of the New Grissom High School. That will be on June 13th from 3:00 to 4:30. So it's a great opportunity to join the Business Association, if you've not done so, and also get a sneak peek of the New Grissom High School. And then one final note, the mayor mentioned to me that we have a birthday among us today, Mr. Tommy Brown, our Director of Transportation. It's your birthday today, and, oh, tomorrow, I'm sorry, we have a birthday tomorrow. So a day ahead, we wish you a happy birthday, because we know, you know, at this point, birthdays are such wonderful occasions. Congratulations. We wish you the best.
Madam President, Madam President, if I may-
Yes, Mr. Keith.
I forgot to leave one point out. If, I was thinking, now that we've heard so many individuals, and I imagine, considering the 22nd, that there will probably be a large crowd, is there any way that we could ask Colonel Hamilton to give a condensed, very condensed, special presentation before we get to the open-mic public on the 22nd meeting? Because it seems as though a lot of people who did not come out to the, our work session that will give a brief overview of Option One and Option Two, because there are clear, distinct differences that I'm missing, if that's okay?
When, is that, can we do that? That seems like a real good idea.
Absolutely, and I agree with that. Also, I would ask if members of council, if you've got specific questions that you've received from constituents that you would like to have directly answered as part of that, if you would shoot those to me, then I will, I'll pull those together and provide answers to specific questions you would like to see addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We will now move on to item 13, Unfinished Items for Action, 13A. His ordinance number 17-381, authorizing the disposal of surplus equipment to be donated to Huntsville Madison County Library. This was introduced at the May 25th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by the Chair. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, New Business Items for Introduction. As a reminder, we have been requested by the administration to consider, to have unanimous consent to consider these items tonight. 14A is an ordinance approving the naming of Bridge Number 019000, to be known as the Korean War Veterans Memorial Bridge. The Chair moves for unanimous consent for consideration tonight.
Second.
We'll have a roll call vote, or a roll call vote. Mr. Keith, how do you vote for unanimous consent?
Yea.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We have unanimous consent for consideration. The Chair moves to approve an ordinance approving the naming of Bridge Number 019000, to be known as the Korean War Veterans Memorial Bridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Robinson, and thank you, council, for your consideration of this item tonight. This bridge naming was presented to the Huntsville Planning Commission as a part of our location, character, and extent process at the Commission's May 2017 meeting. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this naming, and as a result, it's before you tonight for your consideration. This relatively new bridge is located on Old Madison Pike, in close proximity to the Indian Creek Greenway, in between Jan Davis Drive and Slaughter Road.
Are there any questions? Questions for Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Jordan, I had recently just talked to the, this is covered by the city, correct? We are putting the sign up, and we're taking care of everything.
Yes.
Is the family or the young lady who's involved with petitioning for this, is she here today?
Yes, and I think-
Ms. Casey Bertling, if she would come forward, along with Beverly Low, and I think you have a full contingency here.
There you go.
Y'all would all come forward, please.
We, we need to, we need to take a vote. We would, we welcome you, and we look forward to hearing from you, but let's make it official first. Are there any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Ms. Casey, will you come tell us a little bit about the history, about how we got here? And if you would speak into that mic right there, please, I would appreciate it. And if the rest of the, your cohorts would come up with you, this is a great distinguished group who have served this community for many, many years.
Mayor Battle, Madam President, Councilman, thank you so much. And the citizens of Huntsville City, thank you for your presence. This is my husband, Sam Bertling. We've been married forty-three years. And one of my heroes, Pops, we call him Pops, he's Billy Neil. He turned seventeen years old at the Manchurian border during Korean War. Mr. Billy Neil, his daughter, Beverly Low, who's the president of Coalition, and her vice president, Emo, is here with us to witness this confirmation. If you would ever ask me, what is living the American dream, I would say, it is not making lots of money, being rich, and it is not becoming famous. But I would say, being faithful in the community, even the smallest way, even though when no one is watching you, faithfully serve others, making difference. And if you ever had a dream as a child, what you wanted to do, so my childhood dream was to feed a hot meal to Korean War veterans. If I were ever hold equivalent of five dollars in my hand, now I'm living that dream. So Mayor, thank you so much for approving this and making this happen. Michelle, thank you.
And Ms. Jordan has a replica of what will be up there, so we would like for y'all to see that, and-
My father was a Korean War veteran, so I doubly appreciate the honor that you are bestowing by remembering those. Item 14B, again, this is an item for unanimous consent. Item 14B is an ordinance concerning the annexation, I'm sorry, wrong one. Is that right? Yep.
That's correct.
Ordinance, is an ordinance concerning the annexation of 5.47 acres of land lying on the east side of Highway 231 South and on the south side of Bob Wallace Avenue. The Chair moves for unanimous consent for consideration.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. We will move to the roll call vote. Mr. Keith, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have unanimous consent. The Chair moves to approve an ordinance concerning the annexation of 5.47 acres of land lying on the east side of Highway 231 South and on the south side of Bob Wallace Avenue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Ms., Ashley?
This annexation request is approximately 5.47 acres. It's located on the east side of the US Highway 231 South and on the south side of Bob Wallace Avenue. This property is a former environmental plant or industrial site. This property will be demolished and will make way for a new commercial sector, which will, should start construction on this particular site later this year.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Nichols?
Madam President, I think just for layman's terminology, this is, what we did is at the corner of Bob Wallace and the Parkway.
Yes.
Folks will understand.
Mr. Russell?
Ms. Nichols is, if we approve this tonight, is it annexed in, or is there any other hoops this must jump through?
If it's adopted tonight, the item will print in the Huntsville Times within the next ten days, and that makes the item legally effective.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. Thank you very much. We are moving to item 15, New Business Items for Consideration or Action. We have a number of items. Are there any items anyone wishes to hold?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to hold 15F, 15G, 15L, 15W, and 15X.
15F, 15G, 15L, 15W, 15X.
Correct.
Are there any items anyone else wishes to hold? And we will proceed with the remaining items. 15A is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. 15B is an ordinance amending budget number, ordinance number 16-659, by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. 15C is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16-659, by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. 15D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidders meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. 15E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and S&amp;M E, Inc., for construction materials, testing services for alternate access road from Moores Mill Road into Chase Industrial Park, project number 71-16RD04. 15H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for professional engineering and surveying services for Brig Spring Park West seawall stabilization and park improvements, project number 65-15-DR05. 15I is a resolution authorizing the mayor enter into an agreement with, for reimbursement of costs for construction for the patching of the northbound outside lane on US 431 Governor's Drive west of Park Hill Road between the State of Alabama and the City of Huntsville, Alabama. 15J is a resolution of support and approval of the construction of the Dry Creek Greenway. 15K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one and final between the City of Huntsville and Pro Electric, Inc., for Brig Spring Park West electrical renovations at 200 Church Street. 15M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Baseline Sports Construction, LLC for construction services for the Huntsville Tennis Center expansion located on 2305 Airport Road. 15N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Madison Electric, Inc., for construction services for the Merrimack Soccer Expansion located on 2800 Drake Avenue. 15O is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Police Department and the United States Marshal Service for vehicle retrofitting expenses in the amount of $5,000. 15P is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the claim of Jane Cantrell. 15Q is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke National Bank of Commerce Letter of Credit number 400957400 for Lanier Lakes subdivision. 15R is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Bank Independent Letter of Credit number 20895039 for London, Phase One in Jones Valley subdivision. 15S is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke National Bank of Commerce Letter of Credit number 401474600 for the Terrace of Nature's Cove subdivision. 15T is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank Letter of Credit number 831326189 for Heritage Village, Phase One subdivision. 15U is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank Letter of Credit number 831326186 for Heritage Estates, Phase Two subdivision. Phase, item 15V is a resolution authorizing the City of Huntsville to commence condemnation proceedings for a permit, exclusive utility, and drainage easement for the Martin Road and Widening Project. 15Y is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a First Amendment to project development agreement among the City of Huntsville General Electric Company and Advanced Silicon Fibers, LLC. 15F is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of accountant for pay grade 17, and to fill at a higher than minimum rate if necessary. 15AA is a request for authorization to advertise and fill a budgeted position of building inspector. 15AB is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one traffic signal technician, one, grade 15. 15AC is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one street sign and marketing technician, grade 10.
Madam President, I move for consolidation, approval of 15A through 15E, 15H through 15K, 15M through 15V, and 15Y through 15AC.
Second, second by Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now proceed to 15F. 15F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for engineering design services for urban renewal priority zone one, public infrastructure, project number 71-17-SP32. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling.
Madam Chairman, I have questions.
Would you like to address them to Ms. Martin?
Yeah, Ms. Martin, could you please explain this and tell us what Urban Renewal Priority Zone One is?
Yes, sir. This is in accordance with the urban renewal plan that we presented to you two years ago. Priority Zone One was identified as the Madison Square Mall site. So what this is, is it's a design contract with Garver Engineers for the redevelopment to include planning, surveying, design, as well as construction administration for the redevelopment of that site.
And the planning of just public infrastructure, or is it planning buildings as well?
Correct. It is just only all public infrastructure.
Okay, so roads and what else?
Roads, utilities. We have the public open space area, as well as regional detention, and any masquerading associated with the site.
And how does this fit in the budget for that project?
It is in accordance with the budget that was proposed to you for the urban renewal plan.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. 15G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Forsite, Inc., for engineering design services for Holmes Avenue corridor improvements, project number 71-17-SP33.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Martin?
Yes, council members, this is a very exciting new project. It's a collaborative effort between multiple city departments for our first complete street. And what a complete street is, is it incorporates all modes of transportation. So this contract is a design contract with Forsite to provide the surveying and design and streetscape improvements for Holmes Avenue, to include bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities. It's about 2.7 miles. It's along Holmes Avenue between Monroe Street and John Wright Drive Boulevard at UAH Campus. All improvements are proposed to be within the existing right-of-way. And so this is dedicated bike lanes and shared multi-use paths. It will contain wider sidewalks, decorative lighting, landscaping, irrigation, as well as some street furniture and transit stop locations along this corridor.
Sounds like an exciting project. Are there questions for Ms. Martin?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Keith?
And why did we choose Holmes?
Well, you know, Dennis Madsen with our planning department could probably better answer that.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Madsen?
I should have tapped you and told you I was behind you. Yeah, this is actually a corridor that we've been looking at for a while. It's one of two that we submitted initially with a Complete Streets grant to Smart Growth America. America, so it's one we've been studying. The particular draw was really the single link among a lot of different destinations. You've got downtown linked to UAH and to Cummings Research Park, and it passes through a variety of different neighborhoods, including certain areas that have a high incidence of unemployment and rates of poverty in the household. And looking at amenitizing a corridor like that really improves the connection and for a community like that, access to jobs, access to services. So this is something that we really feel like can do double, triple duty if and when we get it implemented.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea. And one of the questions that they were asked, what is the build-out timeline?
It could take some time. We're basically going to do it in a number of segments. I think a lot of what this study will do will kind of inform what's reasonable within a number of years.
And then finally, when we get back with the study, we will contact Holmes up and down, 4th, 5th, the top part of Jack Coleman.
We may do a special one on Jack Coleman specifically for that, but no, everyone knows planning loves to do public meetings, and engineering does too. Now, that's a big part of actually the outreach for this, is because it's going to impact so many communities, we'll go out and do a series of public forums for folks.
Great work. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Kling.
I think just a comment. This is great neighborhood revitalization. It's not one neighborhood, but it's actually multiple neighborhoods. And I think it's a great, great thing, and I got a sneaking suspicion that after this is underway and we see some good things from it, that this might be the first of what could be multiple neighborhoods or similar projects that could take place in different corridors throughout the entire city.
That's an excellent point. We definitely see this as a pilot project. If we can make, you know, really make the inroads that we think that this will have, then we absolutely see it applicable throughout the city.
Any other comments? Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mattson, are -- is there any thoughts into getting the UAH students involved so that they'll figure out how to get downtown and spend some money?
Absolutely. That's -- they are one of the targets. And we've had, in a lot of our public outreach, we've actually had a number of students suggest that, you know, there have been folks who've mentioned they don't have a car when they're students and they'd love to have easier access to downtown. This is an opportunity, whether they want to walk just a short distance or bike the length or take transit in the future, this is definitely designed with them in mind.
And is there any truth to the rumor that Jack Coleman will be left turn only?
We're going to wait on the study to really tell us that.
Okay. She's watching y'all.
Right. We know they --
Any other comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to 15L. 15L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Barge Wagner Sumner &amp; Cannon Inc. for engineering services for the John Hunt Park Pavilion located on Airport Road. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell.
Madam President, I held this because of the confusion and just want to make sure it's explained. Mr. Easter, please.
Thank you very much. Mr. Easter.
Yes, this is civil engineering work for a portion of John Hunt Park. This will be primarily the area that's designated as a festival area. It's also preparing for a pavilion that will go up in that area when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Easter, is this in any way connected to either of the options for the golf course?
It is not.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I could add, just for clarity, so if you went out to John Hunt Park right now on the north side of Airport Road, you would see that there's a street network under construction. So there's a, what right now we're just informally referring to as East-West Connector. It's a street that connects from JC Way, near the JC Building, back to the east that connects to Old Airport Road behind the current Military Museum. This pavilion would be north of that. So it's well north of that soccer complex right there at the edge of the festival, which is essentially what will be a large open area between Joe Davis Stadium and the soccer complex to the south.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Are there any questions? Other comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15W is a resolution rescinding and replacing the development and annexation agreement between the City of Huntsville and Aurora Properties LLC. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Riley.
This explanation applies to both W and X in that they're together. One involves the development agreement and the other the ground lease agreement. You may recall that the council passed a development agreement and a ground lease agreement for the Aurora Property site at the corner of Bob Wallace and Memorial Parkway, the same site that tonight was passed on the annexation. And that particular agreement, which was passed, allowed the mayor the opportunity to negotiate a more secure position for the city with respect to the parking garage construction thereon. And since that time, the developer has also obtained a new lender. The new lender apparently had some requests with regard to the development agreement as well. So for clarity, the parties decided it would be best to simply rescind the previous agreements and replace them with new ground leases and development agreement, again, for clarity purposes. The agreement remains basically the same with regard to city participation in the project, which -- at which the cost is capped, and it's capped at the same amount. The required development amenities for the project are also remaining the same. And then there were some new negotiated items, for instance, requiring the development to submit proof of ownership to the -- and funding associated with the project to the City of Huntsville, and also providing for payment of an initial overage payment with respect to the cost estimates on the parking garage. So should that cost of that parking garage exceed the cost that the city has agreed to pay, it would be covered by this overage payment. And of course, it will be returned to the developer if that does not occur. Finally, the date that construction will commence has changed from April 1 to July 1 of 2017. So those are the primary modifications.
Are there questions for Mr. Riley? I do have one question, and it came up last time, and we just want to clarify. Can you please tell us who the partners are in Aurora Properties LLC?
I don't have the names off the top of my head, to be honest with you, but it's Aurora Properties LLC is the primary organization with which we're -- the contract is being met.
Mr. Hamilton.
So I can also, I also cannot list all of the members of that LLC. I do know that the owners of the property remain part of the partnership, as well as RCP Properties is the lead developer. So that developer would be familiar to, there's a number of other properties that they're developing around the city, to include Mid-City and City Center. So I know that they are the lead developers for that.
Thank you. I think that's the information.
Madam President, I have a question, sir. The July 1 start date, are we protected from what's going on in downtown where we just have a, just a dirt site for years?
Well, there are requirements, yes, in the agreement requiring them to meet these dates. And so, yes, there should be some protections in there. And those were negotiated in connection, of course, with the things that happened at the downtown agreement. I am happy to say, if you've gone by, though, it is clear that things are happening at the downtown site as well now. So there's some real work going on there. So that's good news to report.
I would, for clarity, because since we're comparing this particular development agreement to other developments, City Center is city-owned property, and so the nature of that development agreement is altered because we're the owners. And so there's certainly other things that we need to do to cause development to occur. In this case, this is privately owned property. We're participating and incentivizing that development, but ultimately, the private developer will have more control than the city would because they own the property. At the same time, we would make no contribution if they didn't do a development. So in order for, to receive any participation from the city, they certainly have firm obligations to develop to certain minimum standards, certain minimum sizes, and to a timeline. But if for some reason the market caused them to abandon this development, it's privately owned property, and so they will maintain it as such.
Yeah, and we discussed this last time, so the parking garage doesn't get built until they do what they say they're going to do. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15X is a resolution rescinding and replacing the ground lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Aurora Properties LLC. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. And again, I think, Mr. Riley, you indicated that this is just more of the same.
Correct. This is another agreement, sister agreement, shall we say.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move now to item 16, legal department items and transactions. 16A, vacations of easement. 16A1 is an ordinance vacating a utility and drainage easement between lots 2 and 3, Hamner Subdivision, 1113 and 1115 Wayne Road.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second by the Chair. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 162 is an ordinance vacating a portion of utility and drainage easement, lot 7, Fagan Springs, 104 Tollgate Circle.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will move now on to item 17, non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to address the public? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to address the council. Mr. Bryant, we'll begin with you.
James Detlefson, 410 London Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. During the presentation on golf, I kind of looked at some numbers, and I want to make sure that we understand what's going on in there. There was a number of about 525 for pass holders that were playing. These are pass holders that play at odd times. They don't play in prime time, so you're generating some revenue. It didn't take in cart rentals or anything else. If the last set of numbers that I've got that are accurate are 2015, if I simply take the revenue produced versus the rounds that were played, the average produced was $27.50 was what the revenue generated per round. That's not a bad number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Brewer. I live in South Huntsville, and I just wanted to relay a message. First of all, I would like to tell Mayor Battle, I believe the word you wanted to use was genre. I wanted to follow with Councilman Keith's comments about the group they had yesterday in his neighborhood. I wanted to relay this because it really touched me. The other day, I went to Aldi's in South Huntsville, and I put some items in my basket, went up to checkout, and I couldn't afford what was in the basket. So I asked the lady, beautiful lady named Lynne Teshia, to remove some of the items, which she did. She rang up again, still didn't have enough money. So I said, okay, just let me have the milk. So she puts, she said, how much do you have? And I said, I have a $1.55. And she said, let me have that. And she put some, two other items in my basket along with the milk. And I said, I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't buy that. And she said, I'm buying it for you. I just thought that was beautiful, and I wanted to relay that. She was a beautiful African-American woman. She didn't have to do that, and I just think it's a good thing to pass things forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Yes, my name is Jackie Stone, native Huntsvillian, now resident at 1003 Randolph Avenue, 35801. First of all, I want to thank Mark Russell for your, all your hard work for us. I'm here to represent another form of the cycling community. But before I say that, I just appreciate whatever consideration you take in this matter because I know that you will make a, you will make the right decision, no matter what it is. Longtime cyclist, now I, my time now goes to the Special Olympics, and we recently took many Special Olympians to the state cycling competition, and we didn't bring anything home less than silver. So I'm kind of here to educate you and all of you, the public, that there's a, there's a need out there for Special Olympians, for people with special needs, and places for them to go and be active that is safe. As a cyclist for 30 years, I have ridden on the road and I've ridden on the trails. But some of these special needs people, they can't do that. So greenways, trails by golf courses, anything, anything that you can do for these special needs people. Thank you. And Devin Keith, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Will Rogers, 2804 Briarwood Drive, 35801. I'm just going to be brief because I want to hand the council a couple of the financials, the economic impact that what we've been talking about for the last several weeks. But after the meeting, I want to talk to a few of you, if that's, if you guys have the time, just to share a couple of things. Thanks.
Mr. Rogers, if you'd like to bring those up after the meeting, we can get those distributed. Or Councilman Keith, if you want to go get, where are you heading down to get them? Thank you. We appreciate you doing that. We'll see that everybody gets one. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Time is yours.
I know we just got two options on that golf course, when y'all going to vote on it? And that's pretty scary that you can't work it out in a different way. I don't know how you're going to handle it, but, and I also would like for you to go over real slow, not talk too fast, about this downtown master plan that meeting that's coming up. Because I think you're going to vote on it pretty quick once you throw it out there this last time. I already see some of it going on tonight. Holmes Avenue and some of this other stuff, I thought that was part of the downtown master plan. Maybe it's not. But I want to check out and get a copy of all that on Holmes Avenue. I want to see what's going on in that area. And I just want to ask you something. Who owns 100 acres in Research Park? Some people tell me that some big developer owns it. Some people tell me the city owns it. And then who is developing and making, doing the land work over here on this Holiday Inn? Does the city do all the work? When we partner with these people, do we lay it all down and do the tearing down and do the roadwork and everything and lay it ready for them to build? Is that public-private partnership? Sometimes I'd like for you to explain public-private partnership with me. I've been here for 30 years, and I've never understood it. And then when I see about the old Mallory Plant down on Bob Wallace and the Parkway, I've been told that property does not perk. That was a manufacturing plant, so y'all need to look into that. Somebody pretty strong up high come and stopped me and said, that property won't perk. It was a manufacturing plant, so I don't know what's going on there. You need to put that in your paperwork up there. And when you say LLC, who owns it? You'd be shocked at LLC. They won't put their names on there, who owns this property. You'd be shocked. Go to the tax assessor's office and find out. That's a way of hiding out who owns it, a lot of times, when you put LLC on there. I'm learning a lot and taking on government. What was the name of that book, Mayor Battle, that you had up there a while ago?
If Mayors Ruled the World.
God forbid. Would they let them all come into City Hall and visit City Hall? I'm not going to read that book until you change your mind about me coming in downtown. Thank y'all, bye.
And if I might just take a minute and answer a couple of questions. Most of the open, open area land in Research Park is owned by the City of Huntsville. We own the property out there. Some of it has been bought, but it has restrictions on it that it has to be developed in so many years, or we have the power to come back and repurchase if we so choose. So the second question was on City Center. Over here, we got an email just today from AT&amp;T, and it looks like they're now getting their fiber out of the way. They've been, they have pulled part of the copper, and they're supposed to finish up everything by the end of next week. At the end of next week, that property be free and clear and be able to finish the foundations on the very front end of it. So you should see things start to move pretty quickly on that one, at that point. It's been very frustrating waiting to move fiber. I didn't realize it was as intricate as it was, but they have been working very hard. Our city crews have been working hard, providing some conduit for them to put the fiber into so that they could move off of the property and off of where the foundations have to go and move it to the proper place.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Oh, wait. Sir, if you'd like to come to the microphone, if you'd like to come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, please.
Kevin Wild, 113 4th Street.
Kevin Wild, one thirteen Fourth Street. And I just wanted to, just bring up a couple of things. And once again, I think you guys are doing a great job. I think the Holmes Greenway will be good. I think it's a little too late. I think that we have residents that have been there for a very long time that aren't able to reach resources. And, you know, they're, you know, and, and the jobs have left the neighborhoods, like my neighborhood in, in, in fourth district, you know, it's manufacturing, mills, cotton, things that weren't, the arsenal, the hospital. There's a reason all those houses are there. I've been spending a lot of time looking at the old maps and the way it was laid out. We didn't have transportation problems. You could walk there. I think that if you're a pedestrian in this town, you're a second-rate citizen at best, because you're either poor, homeless, or crazy. And I walk to work every day. And I walk through the projects. I walk through Butler Terrace. It's a community. It's not undesirable. It's not scary. You know, we have a homeless camp. Nobody's figured out how to figure that problem out, you know? And they're part of the community too, but they need a mailbox. They need sanitation. And, you know, they need to register if they're, you know, need to be one of the people that need to tell you they live in your neighborhood. And it's been going on for a very long time. But we need the jobs in our neighborhoods. And we need the manufacturing back. And every time you shut down a manufacturing facility, or you annex it to the city, you take away the opportunity to allow people to walk to work. Talking about a hundred people, thousand people, two thousand people a shift. You employ your city, and you allow people to work without having to commute outside of town to the arsenal, and then you build overpasses. And then, you know, people get hit, because it's unsafe for a girl to walk, I don't know, three hundred extra yards to go around the Parkway on North Side, to go under a sketchy overpass where anybody can pull in, and you get hit by a car in the middle of the night. You know, I mean, that's just lack of planning. So, you know, if we'd quit moving jobs out of the city, and quit moving undesirable people to new locations, and when the neighborhoods are improving, keep the housing projects. Rethink it. You know, I'm, I'm upset that Butler's going to be a large church instead of a medical facility for Huntsville Hospital, UAH, and all of these other, and the veterans. So, you know, which would be more revenue. That's really all I have to say. I'm rambling now. But I think you're doing a good job. I just think we need to think a little more creatively, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? I think, I think I heard a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.